Yeah, I'm starting it.
Can you say that?
Required rear yard setback. The minimum required rear yard setback is 10 feet and they're requesting 3 feet 9 inches. The second variance is also a setback variance, once again, to allow for the expansion and remodel of an existing detached garage. And they would like to request a 6-inch side yard setback where the minimum is 5 feet. Here is the aerial map in the site photo. You can see the existing current detached garage in the site photo, kind of on the right-hand side there. So this has had a couple of variance requests in the past. There was a variance request in 2013 for residential board of adjustment to convert the garage into habitable space. That was approved 5/13 of 2013. I did not see any indication that building permits were obtained, so that has since expired and did expire 6 months after that 2013 approval. BAR 24-40 was a residential board of adjustment case last year. It was a variance to allow a proposed carport that would have been constructed on front of the existing garage that would have encroached into the side yard setback and it would have increased their lot coverage. So there was, that was approved with the stipulation that if constructed, there was a 2-foot minimum side yard setback. I believe this approval expired in January. Building permits were not obtained, but I'm not sure if there was an extension. I didn't see one in the file, but the applicant can speak to that if he has that with him. So the property is located in an established neighborhood. It's a slightly irregular-shaped lot. It's approximately 9,218 square feet in shape and size, and it is relatively flat and was platted without an alley access. There are several mature trees in the rear of this lot, and there is no presence of floodplain or environmental constraints. The primary structure and the existing detached garage were constructed in approximately 1946. The applicant is requesting a variance for the required minimum side and rear yard setbacks to expand the existing garage. The existing garage footprint is 18 feet 5 inches wide by 19 feet 7 inches long. It's approximately 332 square feet. The applicant is proposing expanding the current garage, I'm remodeling the current garage, to 25 feet by 25 feet, approximately 625 square feet. There isn't a cap on the square footage for a garage as long as it's smaller than the primary, based on our city ordinance. The existing garage is located approximately 8 feet 2 inches from the rear property line, and it's approximately 6 inches from the side property line. The proposed garage would be located 3 feet 9 inches from the rear property line and would continue that side setback of approximately 6 inches. So here is the proposed elevation for the expanded garage, and then that's the existing. There is a utility easement in the rear. The applicant, if approved, would have to obtain an encroachment agreement if required from the city, depending on if it's a city utility, or they would have to reach out to whatever private utility that may be and obtain an encroachment agreement. But essentially, they're just looking to expand that overall footprint, and it would have a slight impact on that rear yard setback, which is 10 feet by right, and then it would just continue along the existing sidewall that's already there, approximately 6 inches from the property line. In this situation, the applicant did let us know that if he were to be approved, he would no longer want to do the carport. And I'm going to double-check and make sure that that extension didn't get just lost somewhere in a file. But essentially, they're just asking for an increased garage to accommodate a two-car vehicle. I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Expanding the garage wouldn't result in an increase in lot coverage. That carport that they previously did come to board of adjustment for last summer, that was approved, would have resulted in the lot coverage threshold being exceeded, and they did receive a variance and approval ultimately for that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, ma'am?
Ask a question without blessing? So, did you say the current rear yard setback as built is 6 feet now?
So it is built currently at approximately 8 feet 2 inches. It was built in 1946. I'm not sure if it was rezoned at some point to a 10 or if the zoning ordinance changed, but that's where that 10-foot setback would have come from. So when it was constructed, it likely did not have a 10-foot rear yard setback. However, it does now with that zoning district. And there is, once again, like I said, a 5-foot, 5-foot utility easement in that rear yard that is, would just slightly be on the corner of the proposed garage, right here. So they would have to get in an encroachment agreement for this portion that would be encroaching into that utility easement. But they're approximately 3, I believe it's 3 feet 9 inches, yes, 3 feet 9 inches from that rear property line, and they're proposing, you know, to continue that side yard setback at 6 inches.
Do we know the distance of the front of the proposed structure from the existing main house?
I do not, but they would have to meet the building code requirement there. That was not provided to us. This is a rough site plan, but they would have to meet building separation requirements by building code.
Going back to lot coverage, since even though we approved the carport, it did not get built in the permit or whatever, something expired?
Yes, it is, it is my belief that that approval expired in January.
Does the lot coverage variance expire as well, since nothing was built?
Yes, that is correct. That entire case would have expired. And once again, this is a totally different case with the new site plan. They don't show that carport, so that wouldn't be something that we would consider. If it were to be something that we'd consider and would result in even more increased lot coverage, we would have to bring that variance. So they are proposing a garage, a 25 by 25-foot garage. There is currently an existing garage on site that is 18.5 feet long and approximately 19.7 inches wide. It is, you know, it is sufficient, based on city standards, barely for two-car parking, but I'm not sure that the height would accommodate a vehicle, a modern vehicle. Unfortunately, Ms. Holland, you are cutting out significantly.
I'm so sorry. I have nothing changed. I think there might be some technical issues.
We were hearing you okay, and then we've lost you at the tail end of that.
Okay. Hear me out.
Yeah, we can hear you clear, but we've still seen your, we've lost your video.
Oh, goodness. I don't believe this is something on my end. I'm having any...
We can hear you and see you.
But to clarify, it was mentioned that if they...
I'm sorry, we are still only getting bits and pieces. We did speak with IT. They let us know that on our end, the connection appears to be fine, so they do believe it is something from the incoming feed.
Okay. I'm all right, so if you have continuous high-speed internet, I can reach all time.
Yeah, do we want to, do we have any other questions? Well, Ms. Holland, if you want to try to give a restart or whatnot. Any other questions for staff?
I have a question about the previous variance. And so, understanding right now, they currently have a 6-inch setback with the current structure.
Yes, the current structure is approximately 6 inches from that side property line.
So they, in 2024, they were approved with a 2-foot stipulation for the carport. So does that mean they were going to get, they were going to lose the 6-inch?
So the existing structure in that proposal, that existing garage was proposed to remain, so there would have been no alteration to that structure. That approval essentially meant that the new carport would have to then be 2 feet from that property line.
So that was going to come off the front of that?
That is correct.
I have a question. Is, what, the definition of a habitable space a garage, or is it something else?
So a habitable space is an area that contains an area for living, eating, sleeping. It's generally something that would have air conditioning in it. There would not be allowed to be another stove. So when we say habitable space, we're talking about things like a pool cabana that's completely enclosed, that has some type of HVAC. We're talking about an accessory dwelling unit, small backyard, garage flex space, things like that. In 2013, I didn't find evidence that a permit was pulled for that, so that approval would have expired.
Any other questions for staff? Adrian, we can... We can see you if you want to continue with your question for staff.
Okay, great. And do I sound okay?
So far, so good.
Okay, great. Stop. Did you guys have any, is it my understanding that they said that if they couldn't have this there, they would not proceed? The new garage, is that correct?
That would be something I would direct to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Any other questions for staff? I haven't seen none, is the applicant present? Welcome, sir. If you would provide your name and address and the facts of your case you'd like the board to consider.
Yes, Ryan Bumpus, 3523 Dorothy Lane South. So yes, in 2014, we did apply to do a habitable structure. She was taking her mom, might move up from us, and ex nade that, didn't get a permit. Last year in July, we were here to do a carport, because we're just trying to get shade for the vehicles. We have no shade, and the cars won't fit in the current garage. Height-wise or width-wise, it's just impossible. It's a tiny, tiny little garage. So we thought we would just build a carport, really nice one, coming from the front of it all the way to our wrought iron electric swing gate. And so y'all approved that last year, and I do have an extension on it that expires in July, so if I can't get this approved, I'll just proceed with that. The issue was, even after y'all approved it, the way building wants me to build it, I didn't think would look the best. Non-combustible materials, this, that. It wasn't what my plan to build it was, so I didn't want to do that. I didn't think it would look very nice. So we thought, okay, well, actually, last year when I was here, several of y'all recommended, why don't you tear down the garage and make it bigger? I thought, well, that's going to be a lot of money. I just kind of turfed the backyard. I didn't want to have to tear up the turf. But at this point, it just seems kind of like the easiest route for us, to provide shade for the vehicles. And 25 by 25, it'll give us a little bit of space for, you know, bicycles and tools and, you know, whatnots. Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bumpus. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in support of this?
I didn't bring anybody, except for the protesters here.
All right. Do we have anybody that is, would like to object to this, in opposition to this? If you would. So as a group, you have 7 minutes. So if you would, each state your name, address, and the facts of the case, and your opposition for the board.
Okay, thank you. We are Chris and Cindy Green. We are at 3704 Monticello Drive, directly behind the proposed new garage. I did send an email to you guys with some issues like that, right? And some pictures and stuff from our vantage point. But we do have a couple, I mean, we obviously object to this. It's very encroaching already. It's what you see when you first walk into our backyard. And we actually, they measured it and said it was going to be, you know, 3.3 feet 9 inches. And they said the existing was 8 feet 2 inches or 3 inches. But we measured yesterday, and they are actually, from the roof of their garage, the edge of it, to the middle of our fence is 7.1, 7 feet 1 inch. So actually, their measurements aren't really correct. We don't think, anyway. What do you want to say?
She's correct about that. Their existing garage now, before renovation and enlargement, is 7 feet from our property line, by our measurements. They planned to increase it from a 19-foot garage to a 25-foot garage in length. There would be another 6 feet, right? 18 to 25, 6 feet. So if they're 7 feet now, 6 feet would be 1 foot from our property line, as opposed to all these documents.
We've got to make sure that we're not talking within, if you would, just address the board.
Speaker?
Address the board, not Ronnie.
Yeah, so, in essence, it's egregious that we might think it is right now, the way the garage is, 7 feet away. If it's 1 foot away from our property line, and the height of this structure hasn't been mentioned yet. It's, it's a, it's off-putting to sit in our, and enjoy our backyard.
We also had, we also had a huge tree that was probably 50-plus feet tall, and it was right in front of their garage on our side. The only trees are not on their property, they're on our property. And we had to have one that was diseased, like I said, it was 50 feet plus, taken out, like 2 or 3 weeks ago. So now that's all you see right there when you walk in our backyard. And it also decreases our property value. If we choose to sell, somebody walks into our backyard, and that's what they see, that's a very big turnoff for buyers. So, not that we plan to sell anytime soon, but you never know what the future holds. And I feel like we need to protect that space a little bit more than what it is right now, so.
There's also, one of the parties too that are here with us will address more measurements, but there's also the easement. If they're on that easement, encroachment on the easement, everybody's going to be coming into my backyard utility-wise for repairs.
We need to...
Just a word, you've got about 3 minutes left.
Yeah.
I just watched Cindy and Arthur.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve O'Kelly. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I live at 3700 Monticello. My primary concern with the application before you is that, is the proposed incursion into the easement for the utility. I believe that to be a sewer line, and incursion of 3 some odd feet would make it very difficult for repair of that sewer line, should it ever need that. And I really think that utility easements need to be sacrosanct. I also noted that there are apparently a couple of different versions of this request, some one of which that I have in front of me is proposing a garage to be 26 by 26, which is obviously 676 square feet versus the 625 that's been mentioned today. I'd ask that be clarified as to which is involved. And my final comment is just one on the ability to construct and maintain a west wall of that proposed structure. It will require painting once it's finished, and if it's going to be built within 6 inches of a, an existing wooden, I believe it's a wooden wall, that could be problematic. And so I wonder what would happen in the future as maintenance is required. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly.
Are you taking notes?
2 minutes.
2 minutes, yeah.
My name is Robert Dolson. My wife and I live 2 doors down from the subject property at 3513 Dorothy Lane South. We have a garage in the back of our property, kind of very similar orientation to what the subject garage is. Our garage is downstream from the subject property. Periodically, our garage floods. The water comes right down the lot line, goes along the property line and enters our garage. And it's, I've tried to mitigate this with a trench drain on the west side of our garage, and that's helped.
It enters into his garage.
But this spring, it still floods again. And it's serious. It's, we, after the storm, the spring ended up with 2 or 3 inches of standing water.
We're going to get him to the lot.
This garage project is not going to help that situation at all. It's going to add impervious cover. And, by the way, the subject lot already has a ton of impervious cover. The house, which you all measure, but there's also a circular driveway that's concrete and a long driveway, concrete driveway that has certain difference to it. So there's plenty of impervious cover. And I'm not saying that's the sole reason for flooding, but it's, I think it's a contributor. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Dolson. Mr. Bumpus, you now have 3 minutes to respond to the opposition.
It's hard to remember all of that. I guess we'll go backwards. Robert brought up his garage flooding the last time we were here. Has nothing to do with my property. People that live behind him, you know, they're, we're below them, so they're on elevation. I'm 2 doors down. My garage is nowhere near his property, so when he says his garage floods, what does that got to do with this? Also, his garage sits on dirt. There's no foundation. He has a pool in his backyard that overflowed probably when it rained.
If you...
So, again, nothing to do with me. Jim O'Malley, he brought up some probably good points. I like him a lot. He's a good guy. I don't think it's sewage for the utility easement, it's just for the power lines that sit over the fence. There's no sewer back there. He was worried about maintaining the wall to my other neighbors, the Iglesiases. Well, I mean, that wall right now, I mean, whether the garage is extended or not, sits that way. What's the difference? They're good friends of ours. You know, I could also pull the garage off 12 inches or so if need be, but that's not a problem. I mean, I can, I can work with this. I don't remember the other ones. Oh, they have to look at our garage, I guess, when they go in the backyard. I mean, Jesus, Robert has a 2-car, 2-story car garage at his house that everybody has to stare at, but nobody hears the complaint about that, so. And then it's more of a personal protest, I feel, than what's actually going on with the property, and that's fine.
Okay. There'll be times when, right now, you've had your time to speak, and now it's time for the board. So we're, at this point, we're going to open it up for questions from the board for either the applicant or opposition.
I have a question for the applicant. If you were to build this where you have the back wall of your new structure equal to the existing, back wall of the existing structure, would that work for you? Would you be able to use it for the purpose that you intend?
Yeah, that should work. And can I note something really quick? Sorry. I forgot. They were thinking I was going to build this garage all the way to the back fence. I'm only trying to extend the back of it 2 feet, not 8 feet to the fence line, so.
Right, where with the side?
We were going to bring the front of the garage forward to make up the difference, to get space, not the back of it.
Okay. Also, my other question is, the distance of the front of it to the furthest point of your, towards the street of your house?
Yep, that would be the kitchen, then. And after we do this, it would be roughly, you know, 12 to 15 feet.
Can you get a car out of that left side, is my...
Yes. If I do it exactly like this, I can do that, yes.
Question, is this a true depiction of what the garage would look like, the proposed?
It's going to look similar to that. It's not going to have the divider, so I'm going to do a wooden door, a single door.
Should be quite a bit wider, too, right? You're adding about 6 feet width?
Yes.
Come again?
You're going to add about 6 feet of width to it also? Right now, they look proportionally about the same.
Well, in the pictures, they look the same, but that garage in that photo is wider than the garage that's existing. They just, they just look the same.
wider doors, probably.
Yeah. But yeah, they do look the same in the photo, but no, that one, that's just, in the photo, is definitely wider than the existing one. So it'll still be a single door, yes.
And that's not what we're here to determine anyway, just thoughts.
Yeah.
I wanted to participate.
Thank you, Ms. O.
So you would be okay if we were to amend the depth of it to be equal to the existing depth? You can live with that?
To keep the depth where it is right now?
Backs, back wall at the same place that the existing back wall is. I'd give you, what, 23 feet instead of 25? Can't read that.
I mean, maybe if I could go a foot.
Some people have really long cars, so.
Yeah, I mean, my truck is 20 feet long, so that's the issue.
Okay.
Again, if this doesn't work, we'll just go back with the carport plan. That's its both cars, and it just, it looks aesthetically pleasing, but whatever, I guess.
You know, could you all set the 2 bays? Be able to have one shorter, one longer?
One shorter, one longer?
Not really, because the one that would need to be longer would have to be on the left, and that would just approach into the yard towards their fence and then, you know.
Utility sign-off on this, I don't see a problem with it extending into the utility easement.
The white shirt guy, yeah.
And I want to know, do people have surveys done by licensed engineers?
Yeah, I had surveys done by licensed engineers for the last one, when we were here.
Because typically, they're going to have the same 5-foot utility easement on their side of the fence that you have on your side.
Yes.
So...
Some of these utilities aren't even in use anymore, you know, they've expired and...
Because there's only 10 feet there for utility companies to work with.
Yes.
I would like to confirm that the staff know the utilities are electric-only, not underground utilities.
Staff does not know what utilities are in that utility easement. It wasn't clear on the survey or on any information that we had readily available to us submitted. However, the applicant, as part of the permitting process, would be required to go through that encroachment agreement with whatever proper utility that is.
I'm sorry, to clarify, I can confirm that there is sewer in the back of this lot. Our maps do show a gravity sewer line that runs and starts at the proposed lot and runs all the way down the block. So there is a sewer line in the back of this property.
And it does appear there's also electrical, but sewer makes a difference, I think.
Correct. So there are, our city of Fort Worth maps have development maps, and it has our mapping of water and sewer systems. And I did confirm that there is a gravity sewer system that runs back of this lot. So there may also be anti-utility easements, like Encore AT&amp;T, but I can confirm that there is sewer in the rear.
And so the applicant would have to go through execution of an encroachment agreement with the city, and that would have to be up to, you know, par for that process. However, whether or not an applicant obtains an encroachment agreement prior to coming to the board, it can be looked at a couple of different ways. Sometime, there is a cost associated with that encroachment agreement. So if the setback isn't going to be approved, a lot of times, they don't want to move forward with the encroachment agreement until they know if, for example, their setback, their setback... Sometime, there is a cost associated with that encroachment agreement, so if the setback isn't going to be approved, um, a lot of times, they don't want to move forward with the encroachment agreement until they know if, for example, their setback, their setback variance is going to be approved. Um, just in order to be fiscally responsible, we see that fairly often, uh, and that would be something that they would have to obtain. The staff report also notates that they would have to get a utility agreement, and that's part of meeting all of the development requirements.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Garson?
I have a question for the gentleman's building. What, like, she suggested moving the, uh, the back wall, what about taking the whole garage, just lifting it away from the back wall?
Taking the whole garage and lifting it?
The whole garage, twenty-five by twenty-five, lifting it up?
Something, that's the most ridiculous question I've ever heard. All that is, what's, I'm exactly.
He wants, he wants to build.
Am I reading your diagram correctly? Their request is the twenty-five by twenty-five. Now, taking his new garage, instead of building it where he wants to, move it up towards the house. The difference where he doesn't have to get a variance on, on, and that takes care of Mr. O'Malley's, uh, concern for the, uh.
He can't get out of the garage if he does that. He's gotta pull out of that left bay. He'll be too close to the house to be able to maneuver, I think.
Yeah, that could be true, for sure.
That was my question.
So getting too close to the house will, will make the maneuverability to get into the garage, save the left car at least, it'll just be hard to pull in and out and back out, so. Again, there's some room to work here, but, you know, shrinking it maybe a little on the back. I mean, I can make it work, anything bigger than it is now is gonna be better, right? You can't even get in there, my truck's too tall, um. Yeah, twenty-five by twenty-five would be ideal.
What's the lowest would you be able to go with, with twenty-three be suffice?
We're talking about for the width or the length?
Both.
I don't think so.
I hear you correctly earlier when you said your, your truck, uh, length is twenty-two feet?
Twenty point six. I heard it's a lot bigger these days.
What would be workable outside of twenty-five by twenty-five?
I think he's really nice, he's asking stuff, she's just doing it just to be involved, she's so nice.
I mean, twenty-four by twenty-five would, would, would work as well.
I heard you say that.
So maybe twenty-four, twenty-four deep, twenty-five wide. It would leave me, up to, for ride truck, you know, foot in the front, foot in the back.
Okay. I heard you say that, uh, the neighbor, you like him, he's a good guy, y'all talk all the time. I would like to ask, the neighbor, would he be willing to accept that, twenty-four by twenty-five?
See, she's fishing.
Which neighbor would you like to?
I'm sorry, I'm bad on names, you did say it's not.
I was just referring to Jim O'Malley.
Jim O'Ma-?
Yeah.
Jim, Mr. Jim stays next door to you, right?
It's Steve O'Kelly.
He's, he's on the opposite side.
See, she's testing opposition.
Right.
To see any title.
Steve O'Malley. O'Kelly. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, you told me Jim.
Would, would you like to speak to him?
Well, being that Mr. Steve doesn't stay directly next door to him, uh, he'd more than welcome to come speak and say hello to us. But the neighbor that's directly, uh, next to him, I'm trying to find out, would that be workable, the twenty-four, twenty-five, to the, for them to come into a concise agreement?
The only other neighbor here is, they're not next to me, they're, they're behind me.
So it's, if it's my understanding, it's Mr. and Mrs. Green that live behind you.
They live behind me, yes.
Would you, would you like to ask them a question? If y'all would come up to the lectern here in the middle?
You're gonna measure?
Yes, Ms. Powell?
Yes, I wanted to ask you all, would it be acceptable if he did a twenty-four by twenty-five? Would that be workable for you to come to, uh, a common ground? Because one of my things is that we can disagree to agree, but not be disagreeable.
Of course. If you wouldn't mind speaking into the microphone.
Sorry.
No.
Would, would it be possible for him to add that extra foot in the front, not in the back? I just feel like they're already so close to us. I mean, do you guys have the pictures that we, that I sent?
Just for clarification, I think, uh, he's not, how far back are you gonna add? I thought you were adding from the front, just to clarify.
The plans, the back was gonna be two feet back additionally, three feet forward, and we said, well, maybe we can just go one foot back, which, one foot's not gonna make any difference. And that'll be, I'll, I'll bring it forward four feet, or maybe just leave it to three feet.
Tall is this gonna be, Ryan?
It'll be ten to twelve feet, same, same height as the house.
It's gonna be exactly the same as it is now, as far as height.
If, if we can make.
It'll be a little taller, yes.
We've gotta make sure that we're, uh, addressing them real.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. I understand this is, this is very important for both of you.
It is. It's resale value that is the most important thing to us. It, it is an eyesore, but it's, it's resale value, and I think we're already encroaching from the back, so I don't want to say we would agree with another foot.
Okay.
I guess brick garage is your eyesore, I didn't know that.
If we could.
That's what you have to look at, it is.
If we could, if we could, please keep the comments, uh, to ourselves, please. I understand this is very emotional. Ms. Powell, do you have any other questions?
No, I just had a comment.
We'll, we'll get to the comments and the discussion. Do we have any other questions?
Just having to add one thing, it sounds like.
I'm sorry, um, at this point, the board would have to direct you specifically, the public hearing has been closed, um, so if they don't have a direct question, you, you may not speak, if you'll have a seat. Thank you.
I have one more question for the staff, I, I forgot already, but what size was approved already for the carport?
Um, so I am, let me go see what it said here. Uh, so the size wasn't in part of the residential, but I do know that from looking, I mean, it, it, it covered quite a bit and came off of that, uh, front. So it came off of the front, the only setback that was in concern there was the side yard setback, and it, it expanded toward the front.
Was there a minimum height on that, or maximum height on that?
It, it wouldn't be able to be taller than the, the primary structure, um, just like any garage in this situation.
Any other questions?
It also wouldn't be able to be classified as like a two-story garage, things like that, um, without habitable space, so it would have to still be within the one-story traditional garage height, same for a carport.
Okay. Go!
Ms. Holland, do you have anything, do you have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna sound on. We will close the public hearing and open it up for discussions or a motion.
I don't have any problem with this as presented, uh, in these older established neighborhoods, all the garages are pretty much on the property lines, so that's typical for this neighborhood, and so being too close to the property line is no big deal. And I think if this, if the utility companies sign off on, approaching on the easement a little bit, then if they're signing off on it, I'm good with it. So I can support this as written.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Duffy?
I, I dislike the utility, the underground utilities in particular, I do feel for the neighbors on that one, um, because you're probably right, they have to get utilities, they're coming from your yard, I mean, maybe.
There's also utility easement on their side of the fence as well, there's a ten-foot total utility easement.
But, um, I remember hating this case last summer, feel like this is for the neighborhood and much better, um, it'd be better looking for the neighborhood than the carport would have been. Um, and getting rid of an old garage with a brand-new one, um, so I feel like it's probably the, the best solution. So that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy.
So I can support this, I too, uh, agree that I think this will look much better than the carport, so I am in favor.
But no one said so far, that they're only gonna prove it if you don't do the carport, I'm waiting for that.
There's just not the clarity from Mr. Jones. He said this is common, it's incompatible with the neighborhood arrangement.
Most, most all the homes in these older neighborhoods, the garages have, were originally built on, on the property line, not set in anything, so if it's set in six inches, that's a plus, so it's typical.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
They're open for a motion, if there's no other comments.
I'd like to make a motion for BAR twenty-five zero three eight as written by the applicant.
She's just smiling.
Second.
Black lady, yeah, she's nice. They're all good, like, the other one was more stressful.
We have a motion to approve BAR dash two-five dash zero three eight, uh, as requested by the applicant, uh, made by Ms. Powell, seconded by Mr. Jones. Uh, staff has asked if we could vote on this separately.
What?
So.
Yes.
If you.
I would like to make a motion for BAR twenty-five zero three eight, a variance request in detail as written by the applicant separately.
Second.
So now we'll call the vote on variance eight? Adrian Holland? Adrian Holland?
We can see you, but.
Sergio Garza?
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Sergio Garza?
Yes.
Kenneth Jones?
Yes.
Joy Dixon?
Yes.
James Hook?
Yes.
Whitwoman?
Yes.
Lucretia Powell?
Yes.
Jennifer Glass-Rentner?
Yes.
Jenna Herrera?
Yes.
Kate Duffy?
Yes.
The motion for variance eight passes? Now we'll call the vote on variance B.
What's variance B? Oh, there's two variants.
Adrian Holland?
I know what they're talking about.
Sergio Garza?
Yes.
Kenneth Jones?
Yes.
Joy Dixon?
Yes.
James Hook?
Yes.
Whitwoman?
I can't really see that, but I want to see.
Lucretia Powell? Jennifer Glass-Rentner?
Yes.
Jenna Herrera?
Yes.
Kate Duffy?
So Arthur Green and Robert are got their heads better.
Motion passes.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Bumpus, both variances were approved, if you have any questions, you can reach out to staff as early as tomorrow. Ms. London, if you would, caller, our last case on the docket.
I'm watching.
Our last case is BAR dash twenty-five dash zero four zero, the address of the property is seven two four Blue Hayes Drive. Scott will be presenting on this one.
I'm watching Cindy and Ann.
The subject property is seven two four Blue Hayes. The owner is Wade Lugo, John Jacqueline Minger, and the applicant is E3 Custom Pools. The subject property is owned to be to family.
Almost done.
Point.
They're already exited.
But for a while, they're having to stand right here, 'cause we're in there, and they don't want to come in with this.
Questions?
They don't shut it.
Any questions?
Do pools measure to the waterline or to the, uh, coping?
It's to the back of beam, which is the edge of the pool, so.
It was hilarious.